Good evening. May I?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Today's date is September 27th. Tonight is the final budget hearing and special town council meeting called for 7:00 PM. I apologize, it's 7:10. We need 100% of the council people here before we can start. Now that we do, we can start. Meeting officially called to order. Town clerk, can you please call roll?
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mandell.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Rojas. Here.
If we could all please rise and put your hand on your heart. And can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I know you've been practicing all week.
Right.
Okay, this evening, first of all, we're going to go through the final budget hearing. We're going to first approve the millage rate. Once we approve the millage rate, then we will go approve the budget. Once we approve the budget, we will go on to the regular town council meeting. So first is item D, adoption of the final millage and the final budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. You could read it, a resolution of town council adopting the final millage rate for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, adopting the final millage rate of the town of Golden Beach for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2018, through September 30th, 2019 pursuant to Florida statute 200.065 trim bill, providing for an effective date.
Okay, I need first a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Alex, you want to just give us a quick summary again?
Yeah.
Of the final millage rate, so we can...
Mayor, real quick, it's important to put into the record that the final millage rate for the town of Golden Beach for fiscal year commencing October 1, 2018, through September 30th, 2019. B and is hereby fixed at a rate of 7.48 mils, which is 7.48 mils per every dollar, per every thousand dollars of assessed property values within the town of Golden Beach. Further, the rollback rate is 7.0802, and the final millage rate is 7.4808 mils, which is 5.6468% over the rollback rate. And the devoted debt service millage rate for fiscal year will be 0.9200 mils. Mayor, like we presented at the first budget hearing, our millage rate is, we typically here in Golden Beach talk about a combined millage rate. Our combined millage rate for the proposed fiscal year 2018-2019 is set at 7.8 mils. It is the same millage rate as last year. It's been the same millage rate for the last three years. We've lowered the millage three times over the last decade here in Golden Beach. That does not mean that you don't have a tax increase. If your value of your home went up, your taxes may go up. Don't forget, we are just 25% of your tax bill. The rest of your, the other taxing authorities have influence over your tax bill. The town of Golden Beach is proposing to maintain the millage rate at 7.8 mils, which is what we discussed at the first budget hearing.
Okay. Ken, I need you in here to approve, please. I'll get you dinner in a few minutes. Easy there, Junior. Okay, any questions, council comments? No council comments? Any public comments? No public comments? So we will vote on the final millage rate for 2018-2019. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our millage passes. Congratulations to the council and to the town staff. Next is a resolution of town council adopting the final budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2018, through September 30, 2019.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, adopting the final budgets for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019 pursuant to Florida statute 200.065 trim bill, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the town council, as we reviewed at the last budget hearing, your first budget hearing, we're proposing a $9.4 million operating budget and a $629,000 capital improvement budget. Both budgets are fully funded based on the millage rate that you recently adopted. I also want to put into the record the projects for the coming year as it relates to the 330 fund. We intend to enact and commence the canal maintenance program. We intend to commence a Center Island pump station program. We also have funding for a A1A corridor study. In addition to that, we also have money set aside for our town hall civic center master planning process. Those are the capital projects that we intend to fund out of this year's capital budget. And as you know, our operating budget is basically, I would say, majority of ad verum dollars. We propose a budget that has a 3% across the board, cost of living increase for our employees. We have a big purchase of police vehicles in next year's budget. And the most important thing that we'll be recognizing during the next fiscal year is our 90th anniversary as we do turn 90 this year. With that said, there are no changes from last budget hearing to this budget hearing. Those are the capital projects, and those are your capital budgets and your operating budget.
Thank you. With that, I'll open up to town council. Any comments or questions? Okay, before we have roll call, Steve, can you call Councilman Bernstein in?
Mm-hmm. We need to...
Okay, close the council comments, public. There are no public comments. Roll call for the 2018-2019 final budget. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With that, the millage rate and the budget passed. Congratulations.
Can I also say the changes to the budget, very nice.
Looks like there was some heart put into that. I appreciate it.
It does. It gives you a better visual.
So with that, we'll move on to the next item. Any presentations? There are none. Motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal items from the consent agenda to changes agenda. I have none. Council?
None.
None? Staff?
Mayor, on item number eight in the resolution title, it reads amendment number one. It's actually amendment number two. It was a scribbler's error. And also, that particular item's memo has X's in the memo. The X's will be filled in once the action, once you actually adopt the item. So those are the two, just for the record.
Okay, we'll address those when those come about. Shouldn't be any issues. With that, there's no changes. We'll move to good and welfare. Is anyone here for good and welfare or any comments?
Nothing.
No?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, moving right along from good and welfare, we'll move to mayor's report. Just a few quick comments. First of all, congratulations to the staff and also my fellow council members for keeping the millage rate the same as it has been for the prior years. At the same time, by not improving or increasing our tax rate, we're enabling, at the same time, we're still improving the town, improving the town services, and also the amenities for the residents. So whenever you can do that and not increase the cost to the residents, it's a win-win situation for everybody. So once again, I know you guys worked really hard, both the town manager, Maria, you and the finance department, and Lisette and everyone else. Congratulations and thank you for your hard work. The beach pavilion and the, it's pretty much completed. The actual building should be completed in the next few weeks. Town manager will give you an update on it. But if you haven't gone to the beach to really appreciate the amenities that were added, I suggest that you do that. The job came out phenomenally well, and I've gotten a lot of compliments on it. And the beach looks beautiful, minus the seaweed. And very pleased how the beach pavilion came out. The guardhouse and Tweedle Park also, projects that we've endeavored in the last few months. Both those projects are completed. I think just some little touch-up work to both the projects, but in essence, they're all done. They came out, in my opinion, beautiful. All of our projects came within, at or below our budgeted amounts. So that too is a feather in the town administration's cap and a job well done. I think that everyone will agree that the town, when you drive through the town, it's very, very appealing, and it's getting better and better with time. And I'm very proud how the town came out and how it looks. We still have a lot of work to do, not only with the additional projects, but at the same time, maintaining all the work that we do. You know, it's one thing to do a capital improvement project and two years later, not keep it up and address it, and then a few years later, we have to do it again because we haven't maintained it. So the town manager and I are assuring the residents that we will stay on top of our projects and make sure they're well-maintained, so we get the longevity that we need from these projects. The lighting project is moving a little slower than we anticipated. I think the hurricane had some effect on it, some of the FPNL. Work crews had to go up to the Carolinas, but town manager will give us an update, but I'm sure, I know it'll be done on schedule, and I know within the right, it's going to be within our budget. When I was gone, there was the 5K run. I know we had better participation in the years past, and hopefully we'll have, we'll continue that project. I know everyone had fun talking to some of the people that participated in it, and I think the participation increased dramatically over the prior year. And I want to thank everyone who did it, who put it together, the committee, and who participated in it. I think it's a great little amenity to offer to the town residents. It's just another event that brings the community together, so it's nice to have. Today was Dogs on the Beach. Myself went and GB went, and there weren't that many dogs, I think because of, I don't know, because of the council meeting, or maybe it wasn't publicized enough. Hopefully next quarter, we'll get some additional participation, but it was a successful event. There were no incidents, and I know the dogs really, really enjoyed it. So with that, I'll move on to council comments, and I'll start with Councilman Bernstein. Oh, you want to eat? Hold on, sorry. Councilwoman Luskin.
Okay.
Ken needs 10 minutes, he's eating.
The first thing I have on my list, I'll wait for you, Alex, it's the lights, because the town is still really dark. I'm getting a lot of phone calls about it. I hadn't thought of it. It makes sense that a lot of the FPL crews would go to the Carolina, but it is pretty dark, so... I think I want to spend the rest of my time, which just briefly, just spending a little bit of time talking about the Ocean Boulevard residents, the ones that live on both the east and west side. I, my only concern and reason I'm bringing it up is because I speak with a lot of those residents frequently, and obviously, they've been very upset about the conditions of the ocean lately. And I mean, kudos to you and to the town for displaying on the website the ocean conditions. A lot of residents are really pleased with that, and they refer to it often because, you know, it's like the day before you post that you can't go out in the water, a lot of residents are calling and saying, it's so mucky, I had a feeling it was coming. But in general, I just want to just kind of remind everybody, because it's the same issues that we all hear over and over again. And sometimes they feel a little bit left out, and their needs are really different than the inside of town. So I just want to remind everybody that, you know, the same issues that they're always calling about is, and I also want to mention that it's a good thing we're working on the A1A corridor that's going to help them. But I want to ask, many years ago, we talked about putting numbers or some sort of designation on the back of their homes, so that when a police officer is going through and they see something, we talked about it on the...
We did it.
Did we do that?
Yeah, the problem is Irma took them all down.
Okay, but, you know, it's just something that I remembered. And also, you know, I know that we don't have an answer for this, but they're so upset about the cleanliness of the beach, and I'm reading more and more articles in regards to it. So I'm wondering if we kept our eyes open, if we couldn't piggyback with either a Sunny Isles or a Miami beach that wants to do something, especially for those that have condos and hotels, because their tourist season is going to be destroyed if their beaches aren't kept clean, if we couldn't possibly piggyback with some type of, I don't know, mechanical rake or something that would attach to the back of something that would help keep our beaches clean. They also talk about security, and again, we've added a lot of cameras for them, but, you know, they just occasionally say they wish when the police drive through that they go a little slower, and they feel like maybe they need to make a better attempt to look towards the back of their house, so that they feel secure. And I want to also, kudos to you, I don't know how you did it, but the fact when the beach does close, within 15 minutes, you're making the robo-calls out to everybody, and I know that was a difficult task, because Miami-Dade County didn't want us doing it, but it's greatly appreciated by everybody. So that's it. I just don't want our ocean residents to feel that, you know, we're not paying as much attention. They don't get the reminders we do all along Golden Beach Drive that there's going to be a meeting. So, and they, you know, they remind people on the inside of town, they don't get that benefit. And I understand why, we're not going to post things on A1A, but I just want to keep them in mind, because they do oftentimes feel left out. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rojas?
I don't...
Ken, I'll let you keep going. Vice Mayor?
Yes. So first of all, thank you, as the mayor said, thank you to the administration, to Maria, and to Alex and the clerk for putting all this together and the work throughout the last few months, greatly appreciated. I do want to piggyback on just something that Councilwoman Luskin said, which is the A1A corridor. I know we're doing a study there. I do want to remind the town manager to take a look at the possibility of removing the most, the, I can't remember what it's called, the...
Speed tables.
What's it called?
The traffic calming devices are speed tables.
Traffic calming devices, or making it a little less noisy for some of the residents on A1A corridor. I have complaints about that, as I mentioned before. And lastly, I just, I do want to say I've gotten a few comments regarding town hall and its positioning within the budget. As we spoke a little bit, very briefly, last meeting, and I know we're going to be speaking about next meeting, I believe.
October.
It's still a priority. Even though here it's only reflected, I think, $30,000 or $40,000, that's only because it's the very, very beginning. We don't need to allocate more than that, but it's still, I believe it's still a priority for the council.
Hundred percent.
It is for me. Yep, that's it.
Hundred percent. It's one of the projects for next year. You want to go dessert first, or do you want to tell my son?
Vice Mayor, he is tough. He is tough.
We could post, taking a German for...
Ken, go get some food. Ken, go get some, you want dessert, go get dessert.
It's a setup.
All right. Um, I think the main issues that I'm focused on right now are the lighting, which obviously with the hurricane, we can't control FPNL. On the beach, I completely empathize with not just the residents on the beach, but everybody in Golden Beach. This is a problem, not just in our area, but it's all over Miami. I think that the town is trying to do everything they possibly can. We've talked about so many different options, but this, it's much bigger than our little, than our town. But we are all trying to figure out what to do with it. And I think between what Judy and the mayor said, I'm good with all the comments.
Thank you. Moving right along, we'll move to the...
Oh, one last thing, no one's addressed the completion of the pavilion, so maybe if you could just bring people up to speed, because people are asking why it's taking so long.
Thank you. Moving right along, we'll go to the town manager's report.
Mayor, members of the council and residents above at home and in the audience, just want to bring you up to date where we are with most of our projects. I'll first touch on the beach pavilion project. So as you know, we undertook the beach pavilion project once we took delivery of the restrooms at the beach. The pavilion project has suffered a couple setbacks, but we're still within the deliverable time period. Our own residents have been calling the state and the Department of Historic Preservation and causing them to put red tags or stop the project, and ensuring that we are delivering the project to its original historic nature. Just this week, we started the pattern cutting into the ground, into the floor at the pavilion. That pattern was finally approved by the county just this past Monday, so we're putting in the marble into the pattern this week. I rejected some of the work that was done at some of the columns, so I've asked the contractor to go back and redo some of the finishing touches on the columns and the walls. I'm being told it'll take about two more weeks to get what we want done correct. And we're having some difficult times finding the lights. So the mayor and I actually decided this week that we're just going to refurbish and have the current lights refurbished and re-powder coated, so we can use those same lights again, so they'll be the original lights from the 19...
The two lights.
The black lights in the front.
Yeah, the two lights on...
The 1940s. So we're moving forward with that, but the pavilion is moving along. Again, we've suffered some setbacks because our own residents have been causing the state and the county, which we encourage. We want to make sure that people check to make sure that we're not doing anything wrong or illegal, and we encourage that, but it does cause delays. So that project will be finished within the next two weeks. As it relates to the streetlights, a couple of things that it's important to note, the project does have an end-of-the-year completion date, although we're trying to get it completed before August 31st, excuse me, October 31st. The project has suffered some setbacks because of Hurricane Florence. All the FPL crews that were working are contractors, and if you can get triple the contract rate in the Carolinas versus a standard rate here, you're typically going to go to the Carolinas. So I had, I had a conference call with the FPL team just this week. They've promised to get new crews in town, even if they have to use their own men and women to connect our system. In the interim, I've asked them that if we don't have the crews in town by next Monday, that we want what they call horse lights, which are lights brought in on trailers, to set up on the south side of town, because I recognize how dark it is. I do want our residents to know this. We have been paying off-duty and overtime for extra police to be in town, patrolling the south side of town while we've been dark. So it's not, it's not that we went dark and then we forgot about the safety, we actually have additional police patrolling those areas to make sure that our residents are, feel safe and that they're, and that they, that they know that we're watching out for them. So know that I am on top of it. FPL also wanted me to make sure the council was aware that when we switched from hand digging to vacuum digging, they ended up incurring an additional $90,000 in costs, and they've asked that I recognize, that I recognize that they're not going to pass on that extra $90,000. So when the mayor said earlier, are we still under budget or on budget? We are. We were able to convince FPL, or FPL convinced themselves, to eat that loss of going with a vacuum truck, so...
That's the digging to install the new poles?
The new poles, correct.
They were hitting the gas...
They were hitting, they were hitting too many gas lines. So we hope to see crews in town starting next week, and if not, like I said, we've asked them to bring in some temporary lights. Unfortunately, we don't have control over Mother Nature, and that's just kind of one of the setbacks that we've had. Also, as it relates...
When you said it's required to be done by year-end, but there's probably a force majeure type of situation where they have an out with that, right?
Correct. So, yeah, so there is language as it relates to, you know, acts of nature and acts of God that prevent them from being, and there's also no penalties. So our, so remember, our project with FPL is a cooperative deal. So they're putting the system on our behalf. We do have protection in terms of like delivery and the number of lights, and we have control over design, but there is no penalty that they're late. We just, we're pushing to make sure the system gets in. I've been given assurances the system will be in before Halloween. So, and this is also important to understand, all of our lights are here, and they've all been erected. Now it's a matter of energizing them. So we're having issues with energizing crews, but they're working on it. And again, if it wasn't for Hurricane Florence, we would probably be in a different situation, but unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast and how that works. So let's just continue to bear with them. Councilman Luskin, we have looked at cooperating with Howlandale Beach and Sunny Isles Beach as it relates to our beach maintenance. Chris Russo, the city manager of Sunny Isles, and I have had a couple dialogues as it relates to what we can do to improve our beach coordination. I'll tell you what Chris told me, Alex, I do not want to get into the beach management business. We want to continue to rely on Miami-Dade County to do that for us, to take on that burden, both from an ecological permitting perspective and from a beach management perspective. It's very cumbersome. So what he, what he and I have agreed to do is just continue to apply pressure to Miami-Dade County and ask that they continue to provide us with the best service that they possibly can. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, there is a new person in charge of beach maintenance for the county, Mr. Fernandez, I believe is his last name? The new guy?
Nicole, and...
Well, there's a new guy who's in charge of beach maintenance for Miami-Dade County. We've met with them, they've, they've seemed responsive, will continue to be responsive. Public Works crews do go out once a week with the big backhoe and look for large debris material that washes up ashore, and then our Public Works crews go out twice a week, and our beach attendants go out once a day up in north and south to make sure they collect any small debris. As it relates to seaweed, we have to rely on the county. And like Chris said, next door in Sunny Isles, that's not something that the town really should endeavor to get into, because it's a very cumbersome process in terms, and it's very costly as it relates to dealing with the seaweed issue. You are correct, we are adding more cameras on the ocean next year, so our security for our oceanfront residents will be addressed. The mayor has tasked that we bring to the October meeting an update on our canal maintenance program. We're hoping to bring to the council for action our mitigation project. The county has required that we do a mitigation project as it relates to our seagrass here in town. We're in the final stages of our mitigation project. Once we award that mitigation project, then we're going to bring to you immediately the RFP to go out to bid for the canal maintenance work, so we can get started hopefully before the end of the year. And that's kind of the timetable on the canal maintenance. On Center Island, the mayor and I both met with Craig A. Smith, towns engineers, to discover what is the best method and most responsible fiscal approach to handling flooding on Center Island. We'll bring to you at the October meeting a proposal on that. And Council, Vice Mayor Mandell, you are correct, the mayor has tasked that we bring to the council some options and a path forward as it relates to town hall master plan or civic center master planning, so we're currently in the process. Rest assured that the $30,000 that we have in the budget for that process is more than sufficient. In addition to that, I failed to mention earlier during the budget process, don't forget that we are growing this year's fund balance by an additional $500,000 that wasn't allocated in the budget. It was set in the budget specifically to grow the fund balance so that we can use for town hall projects moving forward. Mayor, with that said, I also like to take the opportunity to thank the men and women that work for our staff. I can tell you that this year was a very busy year. We put in $1.6 million worth of new or maintenance capital improvements in the town, in addition to all of our beach projects. At the last council meeting, I provided you with a four-page memo that showed all the extras that we did. We put in $1.6 million worth of projects in the community this past year, and that's a lot of work that we did over the summer. And so kudos to the men and women who've worked in public work. I couldn't be prouder of our police and, our police officers, they do a phenomenal job. And then finally, both Ms. Camacho and Ms. Perez have been here late at night, working with me to get the budget done. I could not take the credit for the document that we put together. Lisette and Maria work really hard in making sure that we dot all our Is and cross all our Ts, and so thank you to both of them personally for their continued support in getting the budget approved. With that, Mayor, there's no more further comment.
One more comment I need to piggyback on you regarding the lights, is there's been an increase in residents' parking on Golden Beach Drive, especially during the evening.
Thank you.
That's a tremendous nuisance for a few reasons. One, it's dark enough, and two, it's causing, it's going to, it's only a matter of time before there's an accident. We had this issue several years ago. We gave the residents some warnings, and then they cleaned it up. We've already given residents multiple warnings. I'm just going to let you know that after they get a warning, you do get a ticket. After they get a ticket, the car will be towed. Okay, that goes along Golden Beach Drive and also on the islands. Everyone needs to park in the, in the driveway and not on Golden Beach Drive. That's been a tremendous nuisance. I don't know why, but it just came up again the last probably two months, and needs to be corrected. So again, you had the warning, now cars are getting tickets, and then cars will be towed. So please abide by the rules and park in the driveway. And there's always exceptions, with the exceptions along with the police. Know about it in advance, we can work with you. Moving right along to the town attorney report.
Very briefly, I just wanted to, I need to request an executive session. We do not have a date yet. We'll check with all of you on the ongoing Sheen litigation. We wanna have a confidential executive session. So Alex will coordinate it when everybody's available, and, but I need your approval to do that.
Thought we did that last meeting, but that's fine.
I don't think we did.
We did.
We did? Okay, so there you go. Just a reminder.
We didn't set a date.
Why didn't you refresh my?
I, I forgot.
Okay, alright, good. We already have that.
I'm getting old, Steve.
We'll set the date.
Town of Golden Beach.
I know exactly where I am.
Get confused with Key Biscayne.
No, 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 no.
Okay, with that, we'll move to ordinance the second reading. There are none. Ordinance is first reading, item number M. There are a few. First is M three, an ordinance amending the town code ordinance to include a new article providing regulations for the use of golf carts.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's court of ordinances by adding sections thirty-eight dash through one hundred, I'm sorry, thirty-eight dash one hundred through thirty-eight dash one zero nine to a new article for golf carts within chapter thirty-eight, traffic and vehicles, to provide regulations for the use of golf carts on the public roads and streets within the town's jurisdiction, providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
With that, any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Okay.
Mayor, this item is being brought to you because we're seeing more and more of our residents buy and own and operate golf carts within the town's jurisdiction. And as you know, golf carts are not street legal devices. There is an exemption in the code, in the Florida statutes, that if we enact a local ordinance allowing them to be used on our local roads, that they are allowed to be utilized. This or, this particular ordinance codifies the provisions of the state statutes allowing for the same provisions as enumerated in the state statutes. So basically, so long as you have a, so long as you're fourteen years of age and your golf cart is street safe, uh, street safe, then it would be allowed to traverse along Golden Beach Drive, the parkways, and the islands. As it currently reads, it's allowed to cross over to the east lot. I believe one of the members is gonna talk about that in a few seconds. But right now, it allows you to cross over A one A. It does not allow you to operate it on A one A. So you cannot operate it on a state road, but you can cross over a state road, and that's an important difference. And so what this ordinance does is allows golf carts to be used within the town of Golden Beach.
Did you say the age of fourteen?
That's a state law. I tried to change it.
That's interesting.
But you can't, we can't change it. It has to stay at fourteen, correct, Steve? Is that what you told me? Yeah, I agree, it should be like sixteen, you would think.
Fourteen just seems young.
So we can't change it even, even if it's within local roads?
Right.
You can't change it.
You cannot, cannot change it.
Okay. Ken, you have some comments?
Yeah. I, I strongly express the concern of everyone on this council about people driving at the age of fourteen. Um, whereas I understand it's a state statute, it's also a state statute that applies to a lot of golfing communities in the north. And when I look at this, I've, I've been to a lot of different areas where they allow this type of thing. I'm not sure if we're treating this as, if it needs to be a, treated like an automobile, where everybody has to have seatbelts on when they do it, or if it's just treated as a golf cart, I'm not sure if we really, it looks like we're treating it as an automobile.
No, we're treating it as a golf cart.
Yeah, no, so what, what- It must, it must have, correct. It must meet all this, it must meet all the safety requirements for, for it to be on the street. So seatbelts, reflector on the back, lights-
Side mirrors.
Side mirrors.
Horn.
Horn.
And if we're doing that, it really is treated like a car. And so the fact that we're gonna have underage, I mean, people who do not have driver's license driving these on, on crowded roads gets me a little nervous. I'd love to try to figure out a way that maybe as part of the approval process to operate the golf carts, maybe they have to come in, and if they don't have a license, at least have some sort of safety type of clinic go through, or just something that we can make sure that people are aware of basic rules, because I see so many kids, mine included, that just don't know necessarily the laws of driving at the age of fourteen.
No, I, I will stick that to, I, I agree with Councilman Bernstein a hundred percent, and that's why I brought it up originally to Alex. And then he told me that, that the attorney said, Steve said that we can't supersede the state law. But is there a way that we can, is there a way that the town can, because he brings up a great point. I mean, a fourteen-year-old kid on a golf cart, golf a bit goes across A one A, is gonna cause a major accident.
Or just goes through a stop sign on Golden Beach Drive.
By the way, I, I have a couple other points just to add on, so I think that we need to make sure that all these golf carts are insured, and maybe let the insurance company take a look at that and say, when they're getting them insured, is somebody underage gonna be driving? And let them deal with that.
They're gonna say no.
Well, they can deal with it, but at least we need to make sure that they get insurance on there. The other things is, right now, we have it so that the, the state statute requires that you can, you can have it so it can go across A one A, but you're not supposed to operate on A one A. But I don't even know why we want to permit vehicles into the beach pavilion. Because I'm thinking that what, 'cause we're gonna have some mechanical issues, first of all. Any of the golf carts that are gonna go through do not necessarily possess sufficient weight to go through and get registered, so everything's going up. So you're gonna create longer lines over there, and I'm just thinking, why don't we just, instead of permitting golf carts to park there, why don't we have golf carts park in the-
West lot?
West lot? Park over there and just walk across the street, and that way we don't have to deal with this issue also of fourteen-year-old kids on A one A.
Let's do one, one, let's handle one thing at a time. Let's talk about, I'm sorry, go on.
Another thing that I think I wanna add, so we can talk about it together, I'm reading the ordinance, and the maximum speed of one of these things is fifteen miles per hour, unless, if it goes on the sidewalk, which in Golden Beach it can't, because ours aren't eight feet wide. Can you imagine these golf carts tuddling along at fifteen miles an hour, and you've got all these people who are gonna at least go the minimum of twenty-five? That's gonna be a big problem.
We, we only have, just so everyone knows-
I know, there's only a couple, there's only a handful.
I think there's one or two max.
I agree, but-
I've never seen it, I don't know.
It's still an issue.
But no, I think we need to address the issue. So why don't we do one issue at a time? Everyone can chime in. The first issue, go on.
Let me, I-
Can we, can we just say, because I, I think right now it might be a significant amount of people, but I think that once people start seeing fourteen-year-old kids or twelve-year-old kids, or whatever it is, driving them, every kid around is, and our streets are gonna be very full of golf carts.
Can we, does someone have to have a quote-unquote need or reason to have a golf cart? So anyone can just have it 'cause they're fun? 'Cause when I first read this, what was in my mind is some elderly residents who can't walk as well as they used to, and that's how a lot of communities have them for that. But, you know, you bring up a good point. In this town, it's gonna look like, oh, a fun recreational vehicle, and there could be more than-
Well, let me just-
It could become unmanageable.
A, a couple of observations, and I think that Councilman Bernstein is correct. You know, when you look at communities up north and golf course-like communities, you see more and more of these ordinances being in place. But you also see them in communities that are coastal. So when you look at Highland Beach and Jupiter Island and Key Biscayne and other coastal communities where you're within a close proximity, using an alternative vehicle to get around is convenient. And so we're starting to see more and more golf carts in town. I agree that there are some mechanical issues with going to the east lot. So currently, the weight of a golf cart and the metal contents of a golf cart, golf cart won't register so that our gate arms open. Whereas in the west lot, there's the intercom button that you could push, and then the guard can open the arm for you. So it, it does make sense from a practical perspective to limit it to only the west lot and not allow it on the east lot, because if you cross over and your cart isn't heavy enough, or it doesn't have enough metal, even though you have a transponder, the, the arm won't operate, 'cause the, the loop, as they call it, doesn't get triggered, and therefore it has no power. So I think that that is a practical recommendation as it relates to that. I don't see any objection for us requiring that golf carts be insured. In fact, the lieutenant can attest to this, he's a recreational vehicle enthusiast, and he has a golf cart, and he has insurance for his golf cart. And so you can get insurance for golf carts. I think that at the minimum, I think that's something that we could look into between now and second reading. We're not sure, I'm not sure whether or not the state has any prohibitions against it, but Steve can look into that for us. But I do like to, I, I, I would welcome the amendment that limits it to only the interior streets. If, if you decide that you're gonna allow it, allow only on the interior streets of Golden Beach, no crossing over to Ocean. And then the insurance provision, and like Councilmember Rojas mentioned, you know, we, we should look at the speed issue. I know that right now there's some golf carts that can go to twenty-five miles an hour or even faster, but I think that the state statute says-
Says it can't go more than fifteen.
Yeah, that's a different vehicle. Once they go beyond that, then they're, they're a different type of vehicle.
Well, we have golf carts, we definitely have golf carts that go over fifteen miles an hour.
Right, then they become street legal, and you have to have a license plate.
Yes.
And it's to be registered.
And I, and I think at that point, you need a license.
Right. Need a license and a license plate.
But how many, but we didn't really even address her issue, which is that now you didn't have-
It's too slow.
Let's stress the issue of the age. Okay? Steve, why don't you do this before second reading? See if there's a way we can, if everyone agrees, I mean, I don't know what Jaime's thought is, and-
I, I will look at it again, but I can tell you that, yeah, we, I looked at it over the past couple days. There's pretty clear direction that you cannot either require a license or increase the age li, uh, limit. But I'll look at it again.
See if there's any change.
Yeah.
If we can, just bring us some second reading. If you can, you can. But again, I think we should allow them, but again, restrict them.
Is, is there anything that, like, is there anything that would restrict us, though, from saying that's fine, you can operate, but you have to have a certain-
Level of skill?
Yeah, you have to go through our program, because if you have a driver's license, you don't have to, but if you don't-
Like a safety program.
Jet ski, you don't even have to be sixteen to drive a jet ski.
You do or don't?
You do now? I don't think you have to be. I think you have to be like fourteen on a jet ski. Fourteen on a jet ski. I mean, I think a jet ski's a lot more dangerous than a golf cart.
Fourteen as long as you have your Boulder's ID card.
Yeah, and jet skis, there's a zoo, you know, on, on-
That's true, but even with a golf cart, if you're going fifteen miles an hour and you're not careful and you take a turn, you can feel, you know, that it could tip over.
I've, we've seen it, like at Turnberry Country Club. Like, when these things fall, when they, when they get knocked over, people get really hurt.
Oh, yeah.
This is not like just like you fall off your bike. And especially like you're falling, and if someone doesn't buckle up, it could get really-
You get crushed.
This is on grass where people are getting like arms. I mean, it's just, it's, you know-
Maybe I'm reading this wrong, but A says a local government entity may enact an ordinance relating to, and then A, golf cart operation equipment, which is more restrictive than those enumerated, enumerated in this section.
Yes.
Does that not mean that we could raise the age?
You, you would think so, except that when you read through and you deal with that age limit, there's been three or four cases and opinions of the Attorney General that says you can't do it. I mean, we can, I'll look at it again.
So why don't you look into it and get back to us?
Okay, so you wanna look at the requirement for insurance, the requirement for some skills test, right? And then potentially increasing the age to sixteen.
And limiting-
Which is basically the, a driver's license age.
And limiting within the town limit.
So what-
And limiting to the west side of the town.
What, what's the purpose of wanting the golf carts right now?
Well, there's a few now that we have them, where there's no rules.
That the city has?
No, residents have.
Residents have.
And should we allow it?
I can't say, I mean, people use them to go to the beach, and people that have walking issues. I mean, a lot of coastal communities allow them.
I, I could see them here, but I could see all the things that Councilman Bernstein-
Let me make, let me make a suggestion also. That, somebody, Alex, or somebody from the police department ought to call Key Biscayne and talk to them. They've had this in place for seventeen or eighteen years, okay? They encourage this all over the place. They want everybody using golf carts. And they have had twenty years of experience in terms of younger kids, they're at fourteen also. They, they may be able to give us some insight into what the problems have been, and then we can address them here.
Find out, find out if they use it on the sidewalk, though.
Just for the record, we have already, we've already contacted Key Biscayne, our police department, our police chief and our lieutenant have worked with their command staff, and that's where, you know, we, they, they talked about, they have a more restrictive- An ordinance for a more restrictive age. It, it works well for Key Biscayne. I think that sometimes we were very fearful to try new things. You know, one of the things that Councilman Bernstein and I spoke about, if this doesn't work, a year from now, we're seeing that there's, we're golf cart crazy, and we wanna change the rules, we could, you know, look at that. I, I, I think that, I don't, I don't think everyone's gonna run out tomorrow to Golf Cart America and go buy a golf cart. I think that what this does is allow people to, to, to utilize them, what we have. Maybe on the weekends, we'll see a lot of golf carting going around with the kids.
One big distinguishing factor between Key Biscayne and us, though, I mean, they have the option of having, you know, they have two lanes in a lot of the city.
They do.
Be not on the residential, you know, where the homes are, those might be a little bit more narrow, but they're also-
Fisher Island has two lanes, and they, and they allow them too. I mean, Fisher Island, same thing, they're like us. They have two lanes, and they allow them, and people, you know, they, they-
What do you do, you charge them?
You mean on Grandin Boulevard, they have-
All right, just out of curiosity, how much is a golf cart?
Could be eighteen grand, fifteen, eighteen. Yeah, they're expensive.
Oh, you get, yeah, with all this stuff?
You get to fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars, huh?
Public.
So then you get-
Okay.
Alright, so we'll get back.
Just a suggestion, but I will look at each one of those things, and if we can do any of them, we'll put them in.
Any public comments? Yes.
What happens, okay, so would you, the Golden Beach resident, be driving it? What happens?
Mrs. Kate, I'm sorry, you need to come to the podium, so we can get your name and address for the record. Yep, just right there.
Here?
Yep.
Okay, Hillary Kate, four thirty-seven, Golden Beach Drive, Golden Beach, Florida, three three six seven. Should I stay here?
Yep, yep.
Okay, my question is, so do you have to be a Golden Beach resident to be driving it? What, I know, well, my kids are gone now, but they have friends over, and what happens if their friends are driving it? And whose insurance is, does a cut-
Just like a car.
It gets a little crazy. I know that, you know, where maybe a thirteen-year-old friend is over and jumps in the seat, and they switch, and they're driving. I just wanted to bring up that.
Just like a car. It's got, I mean, the parents have to-
The owner, the owner of the vehicle will be ultimately responsible for any damage caused by the vehicle.
And of course, it would have to be registered with the town.
No.
No, it doesn't have to be registered with the town. Cars aren't registered.
No, cars, cars are registered for transponder purposes.
You put in here, they're used to-
No, they need a permit. Under this, they need to come in, they need a permit, we need to make sure that, that it has the proper equipment on it, that it's in a safe condition.
You need to be registered with the town.
There you go.
I mean, my, my personal preference is, if we could, I'd love to restrict it to people drive, like sixteen or above, with driver's license.
Yeah, we'll try that. So with the changes, Steve, you gonna look at the following changes?
I'm gonna do all of them.
Okay, so with that, we'll make a motion to approve, subject to the town attorney, returning back to us next meeting with the proposed changes from the council. So with that, a roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.[1511.91] Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
No.
Thank you. Item number four, an ordinance, uh, amending the town code, ordinance to revise the requirements for Zone One oceanfront properties.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, to amend Chapter sixty-six zoning to revise requirements for Zone One oceanfront properties, D, building height, number one, main residence. D, amending allowable, allowable use in the area below the eighteen point two feet NGVD to include a gym and laundry facilities, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, with that, any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
Mayor, this is coming back to us. Alex, you wanna explain?
Yeah, Mayor, this is a cleanup item. So, uh, as you know, we did the Zone One and Zone Two changes for, um, what's allowed or not allowed on Ocean Boulevard. Um, the council had already expressed their desire to allow gyms and, uh, laundry in that sub-basement area. Uh, when we codified the code for some reason, we're not sure how, but it wasn't codified. You've already granted four variances allowing this on Ocean. This is only applies to Zone One underneath the house in that dead area that you can't habitate. This would allow you to have a gym and a laundry facility. You currently allow a restroom and dry storage.
Okay, any council comments?
I, I, I remember us doing that, and just, I don't have an issue with it, it's something I thought we already approved.
Right, I remember it too.
Okay, any, I'm, no, uh, public comments? No, close it to the council, close it to the public, roll call, item number four, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number N, quadra reduce or resolution, there are none. The following two items, uh, four items are on the consent agenda. Item number, uh, O five, a resolution of Town Council approving a mutual aid agreement between the Town of Golden Beach and the City of Miami. Item number O six, a resolution of the Town of Golden Beach approving a mutual aid agreement between the Town of Golden Beach and the City of Sweetwater. Item number O seven, resolution of Town Council authorizing a donation of six surplus police vehicles. Those three items are on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one opposes? Item number O five, O six, and O seven, pass. Moving on to item number P eight, town resolution, a resolution of Town Council approving Amendment one to the two thousand two seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year operating budget for the purpose of awarding employee bonuses.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving Amendment number two to the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year operating budget for the purposes of awarding employee bonuses and amending the originally adopted budget, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
So if you look on item number eight, you'll see the, uh, proposed bonuses for the town, uh, employees. As everyone's aware, the Town of Golden Beach, we haven't, uh, given any, uh, merit increases in several years. We do give a cost of living increase. This is a, a, uh, a bonus to the employees based on their performance. Each, uh, category, they get rated, and they get a, a bonus applied to, uh, depending on their position within the town. Uh, any questions?
Uh, personally, I wish we had a little more money available, um, to give out these bonuses. I think we, um, whereas I think it's a great step that we did. I think, um, some of the people over the past year and a half have just really stepped up their game so much, and between the hurricane and over the past year with all these projects, and we no longer have, you know, now that we no longer have someone in charge of CIP, and we're taking everything inside, I just think if ever our, our staff deserve bigger bonuses, it's been over the past year where we don't have, we're not paying outside CIP, and we felt such strong confidence internally to be able to trust our staff and our manager to leave that, so.
Right, but just to reiterate, last year, the bonuses were paid for the hurricane and the hard labor, so this year it does not affect the hurricane. So, but if you wanna contribute personally more to the bonuses, I'm sure the town employees would really appreciate that, so.
Next project.
Any other comments?
Mayor, we do need it to put into the record. Uh, in addition to the bonuses, this amendment number two to the budget also increases your town budget on non-bonus related expenses. Uh, we had to account for the expenses that we had for Hurricane Irma in the beginning of the fiscal year. As you know, we, we did have some Irma-related costs. There were damage costs, it wasn't staff time at all. Um, but what we needed to do is codify that cost. We had two hundred and six thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars. So we're gonna increase your last year budget by two hundred and six thousand five ninety-nine, and it's being paid for by the insurance and FEMA money.
A question on that, uh, FEMA insurance settlements, two hundred six thousand, is that only two fifths of what we're expecting?
This is through, this is through to where we are today, so we, we're still, we still haven't received, we still haven't received, uh, a fraction of our, of our FEMA money. Uh, we have received some FEMA money, but we still haven't received, received a fraction of what we're, what we're expecting.
I thought we received insurance money.
We have some insurance money and some FEMA money.
How much of the FEMA money have we received?
Very small.
Right, oh, it was my understanding.
They're broken down to small projects.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we are expecting between six and eight hundred thousand?
We're expecting about another five hundred, minimum, minimum five hundred thousand coming to us from, from FEMA.
For the, for the hurricane reimbursement.
That would be great.
We did get all of our insurance money already.
We did, okay. Any questions? Any other comments? With that, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, and that, uh, I agree with Councilman Bernstein, the employees definitely do deserve, uh, the bonus. So with that, we'll move to item number nine, a resolution of Town Council amending the employment agreement for the town manager.
A resolution of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving an amendment to the town manager's employment agreement attached as Exhibit A to this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Okay, with any mo- motion approved?
Motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, as you may not be aware, but the town manager has not had an, an adjustment to his contract since, uh, I negotiated the first one in two thousand and ten. I think, uh, the town manager has done an excellent job. Uh, excellent is understating it, uh, for the Town of Golden Beach. We have a town manager, we're very fortunate, who is dedicated not only to the town of Golden Beach, but also to the residents and to the town employees. He takes very much pride in every project that we do. He has his love and his heart in the projects. I mean, he lives in Golden Beach. He is a twenty-four seven manager. He's here, you know, if he's not here and there's an incident, all the council will agree with me. He is on the, he, uh, will text us or call us immediately. He is always on top of everything that goes on within town. Uh, he's done a, a, a great job, in my opinion. Uh, I've worked with Alex over eleven years. I think the town is very, very fortunate to have such a energetic, uh, dedicated, hardworking manager that we have. Uh, it proves only, not only by the completion and the success we've had with the town projects, but also another part of a, a great town manager is his staff. And, uh, in the eleven years that, uh, Town Manager has been part of the town, I'm sure everyone will agree, we've had very little to no turnover amongst employees. And every time you have turnover employees, it costs, costs the organization a tremendous amount of money. But due to his management skills and due to his, uh, personality and his leadership, we've had very, very little turnover within the staff of, uh, uh, Golden Beach, and that's another feather in his cap. So with that, I, uh, hope everyone reviewed the contract, and does anyone have any questions?
I, I, I have a statement, um, just that, you know, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but throughout date in Broward County, there's a lot of, of town manage, city managers that are being sought after. That a lot of people are looking for, haven't sure just hired someone, they let her go.
Six months.
Six months. Um, that we've been very lucky and fortunate to have someone that we still look, you know, think manages everything great.
And we'd like him still.
That, uh, we've had him eleven years, that, um, you know, just listening to him today, just, that if he wasn't here, if someone else took over something like FPNL, I know we would be losing that money for the shovels, we, you know, and he just saves so much money. Every single council meeting I come to, I listen to how he has saved money for the council. Even just what I was just talking about, the PMS, the CIP, the fact that we are no longer hiring someone specifically to be in charge of CIP. Um, I just think this has a lot to do with our town manager, and, um, I think this is not only adequate, but long overdue. And just when people are looking from our town, why is this happening? Take a look at, just from an investment standpoint, since Alex has been here, how much our property values have appreciated, how much our town has improved. And, um, I know that gets raised by a lot of people, why are we paying so much? But, you know, I think since he's been here, that this city has, um, has exploded in terms of its quality and its excellence, and I just, uh, long overdue.
He, he also makes our job much easier, and usually the expectancy for a town manager in a community is four or five years. They're never there ten, eleven years like you are. And as a result, a lot of their council meetings, we were just talking about it in the kitchen, are, uh, dis- disorganized, uh, not well-run, and, um, I, I certainly think that, um, you, you've fallen in love with Golden Beach, Golden Beach has fallen in love with you. So, um, and I think that anywhere you needed to improve, you always listened, you did improve. The communication in town is, it's like a different town. You respond, and, um, I'm all in favor of your increase, and we thank you for.
And based on the reviews of the, uh, fellow council members, the, uh, contract is well deserved. Any other comments?
He paid me for that.
He did? Hopefully, and just so everyone understands, the contract is a three-year deal, and, uh, he cannot leave before three years. If he does.
It's a huge penalty.
Deal with us.
Huge penalty.
He'll have less hair than when he started. Just so you understand, you know, when he did start, he was like six-three, and he did have an Afro.
He's a picture here.
Right? He had a full head of hair. I mean, you've only been here a year, wait. Any other, uh, public comments? Close it to the council, close it to the publics. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Well-deserved town manager.
Mayor, if I, just a per- point of personal privilege, uh, I just wanna say that it's, uh, it's very humbling to sit here and hear, uh, praises from those who I respect and look up to, who, who've guided me through the last eleven years. I think that, uh, it's also very humbling to sit here before my fellow colleagues, um, when, when I'm receiving, uh, an increase to my, to my salary compensation, my agreement. So just know that, you know, I'll continue to work hard for both our staff and for our community. I'm dedicated to Golden Beach. I don't think anyone lives, breathes, or eats Golden Beach more than I do. Um, I, I take it very personal, uh, when we get attacked here in Golden Beach. I, I treat this like my family, both my staff, uh, and, and the residents that live here. I try to protect them as best I can. I try to provide for them the way I can. Um, I think you're right. I think that in the last eleven years, I've learned how to bite my tongue, take constructive criticism, um, and grow as a person. I also wanna say that, um, you know, these last eleven years, I've had some personal tragedies and some personal difficulties. And I couldn't, uh, be more humble than to say that I consider you guys my family. As you know, I'm currently going through a very personal, tough time, and each of you have been there for me, and I cannot express to you how, how grateful I am to have you, both as my bosses and as my friends, to guide me through these difficult times, and I, I continue to, to be dedicated to Golden Beach. You have my full commitment, Mayor, you're correct. Three years, you've got it. I, I'll continue to work hard. I do have one request. I'm requesting that we move the October meeting. As you know, October has five Tuesdays, and although I was not.
We can change that.
And although I was not gonna ask to change the October meeting, this evening, when I saw the calendar and I see five weeks, um, it would be very helpful, given that we wanna bring to you three big projects for, for your October meeting. It'd be very helpful if you would be okay to move the October meeting to Tuesday, October twenty-third, if there's no conflicts. Uh, that gives us an additional week to fine tune, um, all of our numbers, and make sure that what we bring to you is, is one thousand percent accurate. As you also know, this is the last week of September, so that basically means I only have two weeks to get everything done. So that extra week would be very, very helpful. Um, and it's the week before Halloween.
I, I'm gonna be out of town, um, that's something I can't reschedule. Um, if there's any way, could we put it off to the following week at all, or can you just have it without me, I guess?
We can have it without you.
Or the thirtieth is fine as well.
Or you can call in.
The thirtieth.
He's gonna be out of the country.
Oh.
Thirtieth is almost too late.
That's our of Halloween.
Oh, yeah, we can't do that. She's gotta get ready for our house. You, you don't care, do you?
No, no, or we can, if you want, want to do it on October twenty-ninth, but otherwise, you guys would, I don't need to be here for it.
I don't care, what's good for you, honey?
Give me one second.
Judy?
I'm good, uh, either the twenty-third or, or the thirtieth, or the twenty-ninth.
And if not, we'll just do it on the sixteenth, we'll just have to work harder.
No, no, sixteenth is too soon, because I tell you that we wanna bring.
Yeah, it's, it's next week.
Yeah, there's no way.
I didn't, I, I failed to realize that we're, that Monday is October first.
So let's do the thirtieth.
October thirty?
It's a Tuesday.
You're gonna be back, because you're not gonna be back, you told me.
No, I'm gonna be back, so if you wanna, if you wanna do it.
No, we'll do the thirtieth. You're gonna be back.
I'll be back.
Okay, is that good, honey?
Yep, that's for me.
And it, we only have two more meetings this year. We have October thirtieth and then the November meeting.
Right. Okay, so October thirtieth at seven PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, anyone disagree? No? Now, everyone's our witness, Ken said he would be back.
Mayor, that's even, that's even better. We'll make sure that we get actual renderings for you for, for most of these projects.
With that, I'll make a, uh, anyone else have anything to discuss? With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Any, all in favor, say aye.
And we will send out the email requesting the executive session. I just wanna remind you guys that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Great.
Adjourned, thank you.